Seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Our pastor, who is going to do the invocation this evening, is not here. So I'm going to do a brief invocation. This is, I wanted to share something this evening. That is, I guess, more of a quote that I like and I wanted to share. This is a quote by Mother Teresa. It's written on one of the walls of the children's home in Calcutta. "People are often unreasonable, irrational, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some unfaithful friends and some genuine enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and sincere, people may deceive you. Be honest and sincere anyway. What you spend years creating, others could destroy overnight. Create anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, some may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today will often be forgotten. Do good anyway. Give the best you have, and it will never be enough. Give your best anyway. In the final analysis, it is between you and God. It was never between you and them anyway." Mother Teresa. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. And I'll call the January 2017 regular meeting of City Council to order. Let's rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hoffman, will you take roll call?
Mr. Burke?
Still here.
Mr. Cahill?
Still here.
Ms. Kyle?
Still here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Still here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Still here.
Ms. Cahill?
Still here and missing Bill Haller.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Still here.
Ms. Pitts?
Glad to still be here.
Mr. Nicely?
Yeah.
Ms. Fetty?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Still here as well.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes for the December 6, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we've got the approval of the agenda for this evening. You've received a copy of the agenda for the January 3, 2017, regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move into the special presentations. We've got first up our business spotlight. We've got Dan and Paul Rice from Bluegrass Quality Meats. Would you guys like to come up to the podium? Welcome. Do I understand you have a presentation?
We do. I said they gave us 10 minutes, so I'll try to keep it to 10 minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, somebody's got to show me how to use this. Well, first of all, thank you for inviting us. Dan and I are two of six owners of Bluegrass Quality Meats. We're also the fifth generation of Bluegrass Quality Meats. We started in 1867. So we're celebrating 150 years this year. We've also been in Erlanger for 45 years this year. Thank you for that. A very business-friendly city, by the way.
They're not cooperating?
Thanks, Dave. He took care of me in high school, too. The original founder of the company was Christopher Rice. He started it in 1867. The best we can tell, had a little store at 9th and Madison in Covington. Unfortunately, in 1905, he passed away. This is his son, Christopher Rice II, who took over the business at that point. This is what I do at home with the remote. This is just some memorabilia that we have. The slideshow was made for meat association we belong to. This is some of the memorabilia that we do have in the plant itself. We have a little office there that we have all this in. Moving on. Okay. Christopher, in 1905, took over when his father died. In 1912, he purchased this building, which was at Eastern and Patton. Unfortunately, on the wrong side of the flood wall. 1937, I believe, did him in. But this is a picture of that building where he started out. They were only doing beef and lamb at the time, no pork. It's gotta be me. Okay. Unfortunately, in 1916, Christopher II passed away at the age of 41. At that point, our grandfathers, our grandfather and his two brothers were pulled out of the business to help their mother run the business. And they are actually in that picture there. Beef and lamb are the only products that they had at the time. They wanted to get into the pork business, though, as well. Some more memorabilia from the early '30s. So, 1940, they decided to get into pork business. To do this, they went to Maysville and they purchased this plant. It's a wheeze packing company. Easy way to get into it, they sent our grandfather, Bernie, there to run it. Actually, his mother sent him there to run it. It was remodeled. Wrong way. It was remodeled. Unfortunately, during World War II, this was the brand that they were doing at the time. After Pearl Harbor attack, this didn't go over so well. They had to change branding a little bit. 1945, plant burned to the ground. It was a complete loss. Apologize for that. Anyway, we'll move on. During the war, it was very hard to get anything. You had to have ration stamps for salt, sugar, flour, everything. It was very hard to get supplies. After the plant burned down, my grandfather, our grandfather, came back to Covington and they bought this building at 12th and Fisk, or pretty close to 12th and Holman. If you guys are familiar with the old Hellman Lumber, that was right next door. They bought this business. The Hanley brothers owned this business and it had been closed for many years. We reopened it. They had a brand already, or a name, brand of Bluegrass Provision. We adopted that name when they bought that in the '40s. You can tell a lot of these pictures from during the World War II. Danny will tell you that that young man at the bacon slicer is me. That is not. That is my father. There's some kind of neat pictures. That's my favorite one. The guy's got a cigarette hanging out of his mouth over the bin of meat. Yeah, things have changed a little bit. Actually, lard was a very big thing back then. You can see that was sold in eight-pound containers. During the '60s, we adopted this logo. Not sure if you've had the pig on the fence, but it's pretty catchy. All right, now we're up to 1971. This is when we broke ground on the new plant at the edge of Erlanger, just before you get to Crescent Springs. The old building in Covington was just getting too old to repair anymore, so we had to build a new one. That's what it looked like when they finished it. Some more photos back during the '70s. Some of the brochure literature that we had back then. Okay, this is the fourth generation. My father, his father, and another uncle. They were in full swing in the '80s. This is a picture of, well, it was a picture. That was a picture of the third and fourth generations. Some more labels of product. Okay, 1985, we did an expansion. Things were good. We were blessed. So we added on some warehouse space and some more oven capacity. The guy, second from the right, 40 pounds lighter and had dark hair. That's when the fifth generation started getting in. Another expansion in '87, warehouse and more smokehouse capacity. New logo, started out 1991?
Somewhere there.
2001, when the Kentucky Speedway opened, we were approached to be the official meat sponsor, which we did. We did it for several years. It turned out to be a good thing. This is the fifth generation. Okay, 2001, we broke ground again. We added on roughly another 15,000 square feet. That was with some new kitchen, what we call a sausage kitchen, and three new ovens. I just put that in there for a buddy of mine. All right, the fifth generation, they're in full swing at this point. It's about 2004. Some of the advertising we did, we became the official sponsor for the Bengals for several years. That was in 2006. And these are just, the pictures you'll see next are just some of the equipment in the plant. I think it's a little blurry. Trying to page through this. All right. This, my father made me put this in here. It's the ending of the film, of the show, so. Please, I just not meant to offend anyone. But he made me put it in there. We appreciate all that Erlanger does for us. Very professional on all levels. That's the fire department, the police department, all of you. Very business-friendly and we appreciate that. Hopefully, we can get together sometime this year and when you guys are doing some stuff out there, we'd like to be involved to help promote that we're 150 years old. By the way, hot dogs and bologna are not made out of what you think they are. I was gonna ask if anybody had any questions, I just thought I'd. Somebody will raise their hand and say, "They really are made out of..." Oh, we get a gift, too?
Yeah. Not everybody gets a gift when they come to visit us, but in honor of your 150th year here in Erlanger,
That is very nice. Thank you very much. Great, I have a perfect spot.
That's awesome.
I'd like to stop by. We do have a historical room. Did you guys, did you and Dave get to stop by? And I'll be happy to show it to you, all the old stuff in there. That's the box it goes in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your product.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I love your product.
Yeah, me too.
We do, too. I don't look like I'm under.
All right, next we've got a presentation from Nick Shack from Duke Energy. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. The good news is I don't have a presentation, so I won't be fumbling through that. First off, I'd like to thank Ed Milliken for asking me to come over to speak this evening. I'm here to represent Duke Energy Gas Operations and come out and give us just a quick presentation about the Accelerated Service Replacement Program. But before I get into that, I'd just like a quick introduction about myself. As I mentioned, my name's Nick Shack. I've worked for Duke for 16 years. I spent 14 of that year, those years in the field. So you might have saw me somewhere out in the middle of the night fixing a gas leak or whatever else we were working on. I spent about a year in the office, working as a scheduler between departments, and then I was asked to promote into a project manager over this program. Or not this program, I'm sorry. The Accelerated Service Replacement Program is basically, really, the long and the short of it is, we are, Duke Energy intends to go out and replace services that are metallic, non-coated metallic gas services. What that consists of is copper services or uncoated steel services. As I'm sure everyone in here realizes, old steel services or old unprotected services in the ground only have a certain life expectancy, and that's what we're targeting to get rid of. In 1971, the federal government mandated that every company, power company, cathodically protect all of the material that they put in the ground. So what that entails is putting coating on pipes when they put it in the ground. Prior to that, there was no mandate, so you could put in any kind of material that you wanted. That's the pipe that we're targeting with this program, is pre-1971 pipe. And as I mentioned, all copper of any age. We'll be out replacing those pipes from the main, which is located in the utility right away, all the way up to the meter, which is at the house. This obviously comes into the deal with permitting. All this is planned work, and so we permit to Ed and Public Works Department. Ed and I have coordinated a lot of work together. I would like to continue to coordinate that work with street improvements and our work in combined conjunction with each other so that we can get our work done before everyone in Erlanger has, gets in to do their work as well. One of the things that's new, this is a five-year program with the state of Kentucky. I was fortunate enough to go down and present this program to the staff at the Public Utility Service Commission in Kentucky, down in Lexington, or Frankfurt, I'm sorry. And we're in our second year, 2017 is the second year. The last year, obviously, is going to be 2020. We anticipate working in Erlanger for the remainder of the next three years of the program, including '17 that we're going into this year. At that point in time, really, the last thing that I wanted to mention is, I know we, we're trying to be very transparent in the work that we're doing with your residents and our customers. We want them to be very informed about what we're doing in their neighborhood. In an effort to do that, we're going to send out letters three weeks prior to moving into certain areas, not just as a whole of Erlanger, but possibly certain segmented streets. Ed's going to be kept in constant communication when that is taking place. Ed also has a copy of that letter. So if anyone has any questions, every single service or resident that we're going to be working, that's going to get one of these letters explaining what we're doing and who's going to be doing it. And so, I think really with that, I would just like to open it up. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and...
Is there any cost to the resident?
No, there's not. The service is, the replacement is free of charge. And as I mentioned, that, all restoration, anything incurred with the replacement of the service is free.
And will people lose service parcel by parcel, or will the whole street lose service?
Yes, because the program is based solely on the material type of the service, so it is possible that we might only be doing one service on one street. If the rest of the services are of correct material type, we would not be replacing those. So it is possible that you could just see one service on a street or we could potentially be doing skipping around. And I get questions about that quite often. Why aren't you doing the whole street? Well, because the whole street doesn't need replacing. We're just targeting the ones that do.
Good, okay.
I appreciate you giving me the time to come over and speak tonight. And if anybody has anything following the meeting, Ed's got my contacts and I'll be happy to speak to anybody at any time.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got service recognition. You gonna take this, Mr. Fields?
So I'd like to thank the mayor. I asked if I could do this tonight and he graciously said I could. We're honoring three ladies tonight that have served on council for 10 years, 10 years, and 20 years. We'll start with the 10s. So Ms. Skidmore, would you please come down here? I can say this, I used to sit in this audience in my former position here with the city. And Ms. Skidmore, way before she got elected to city council, was at every one of these meetings. And I kept wondering, wow, what is she gonna do? And finally, she ran and it's been, it's been great for the past 10 years. Renee and her husband, Don, raised their children here in Erlanger, in Erlanger School District. I believe I saw Darren here earlier. He's still in the back. There's the son, Darren. He's back there. She was named Kenton County Alliance Champion. If anybody knows what the Kenton County Alliance is, but that's what Ms. Skidmore reports on every month about it. Drugs, alcohol, tobacco, dealing with our youth. And she is our mainstay on that committee. And she was named the Kenton County Alliance Champion. She was a past nominee of the KLC Elected Official of the Year Award. Co-creator, and this is a big deal if nobody's ever been to it, but Erlanger City Government Day and the Tishner Middle School, which is coming up here in March, Sherry? It's a big deal when we have another 100 kids running around here and seeing what everybody does every day. And if it wasn't for Ms. Skidmore, it probably never would have got created. And Mr. Howard used to drive the bus. I thought I saw him here earlier tonight and we thank him for that one, too. Without both of them, it would have never happened. So if you go to Hardee's days and you get on the carriage ride, you're going to get instructed by Ms. Skidmore. She can take you through the old part of town and she can point out houses and she can tell you one of those houses and the history of it. She's been on council for the past 10 years, as we've said, and she's served on the following committees. Connect Erlanger, the Fire EMS Committee, local government, the Logo Committee, which is still ongoing a little bit. Our City Platform Committee, the Erlanger Elsmere Renaissance Committee, the Erlanger Elsmere Dixie Administration, Dixie Highway Renaissance and the Administration. And as we said, thank you very much for your 10 years. It's been a pleasure working with you and congratulations. Mrs. Pitts? I have to say, this is, you know, when I was the police chief and Ms. Pitts was on the police committee for a couple of terms and got to know her very well in that capacity and all she championed for us. The one thing I never did understand was she's an avid runner and running these mini marathons and I'm not sure. I think there was maybe even a marathon in your, you know, in your past. And I think that was a one-time thing and we didn't do it again. Corinne's married to Tom, she's the mom of two proud daughters. She raised her family in Erlanger. Her daughters attended St. Henry School District. And I believe you coached cross-country there. Again, if you remember the 5K run at the city of Erlanger, used to have a mainstay here, I think handing out the waters and helping everybody along. She's served on council, like we said, for the past 10 years. And she's served on the following committees. Progress and Revitalization, where we've made some impact, hopefully. Fire EMS, police, the Cleanup Erlanger Committee, local government, economic development, finance. She also serves as the city's representative to the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission, Municipal Government League of Cities. It's been fun. Thank you very much. Mrs. Kyle? I wanted to say something I didn't understand about Ms. Pitts running all the time. I didn't understand the thrill. I never understood the Latin teacher either, I'll have to say. Ms. Kyle has lived her entire life in northern Kentucky. She's a graduate of Notre Dame Academy, Thomas More College. She also attended Xavier Northern Kentucky University for graduate school. Been an Erlanger resident for 40-plus years. And she taught in northern Kentucky throughout her career. She taught at Lloyd High School and then she later retired from St. Henry District High School. Like I said, that Latin teacher. She was inducted into St. Henry District High School Hall of Fame as an outstanding educator. She's married to Joe and is a proud parent and grandparent. Of course, we've said this now, Latin is her second language. I don't hear that much. Sharpshooter. She's recognized as a sharpshooter. So over the years, we've talked a lot about the competition shooting and I think we even did some shotgun clay pigeon kind of things. And she is a competition shooter at times. She served on council for 20 years. The following committees. Public Affairs, the Sister Cities International Committee, the Tax Reduction Task Force, the Beautification Committee. Yes, she's an education liaison with the schools. Fire EMS, Long-Term Planning, Friendships, City Networking, Community Development, Police Committee, Revenue Generation Committee, Administration, and Erlanger Elsmere Dispatching, when we put that together back in 2000 or so. And she served, I guess that is the representative to the school board and the Erlanger Historical Society. Mrs. Kyle, it's been a pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Can I make a comment?
Sure.
David, I wanted to, you know, I'm going to tell on myself and you probably know what story I'm going to tell. Every year when we do the City Government Month and we have all the school kids and stuff, I go through my narration and try and update it. And I was like, oh my goodness. So I called David and I said, "David, where's the exact center of the city of Erlanger? Do you want to tell them what you told me?" He's lost and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, what have I done? He goes, "Renee, the center of Erlanger did not change. It's still the center. It got thicker and it got bigger, but it didn't change." I tell that every year now when I tell them where the center of Erlanger is.
That's great.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the mayor's report. First, I wanted to recognize a couple of people. We've got Sophie McVay in the audience here this evening. She's completing part of the requirements for her AP Government and Politics class at Dixie Heights High School. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. And we've also got Lauren Tolliver. And we've also got Lauren Tolliver, one of our interns, who's sitting next to Sheri this evening. Welcome. And so a couple of brief things I wanted to mention. Good news, as a lot of you know, we've been working on a sidewalk on Nelson Road. And there was a few properties that, or a few parcel owners that were holding out on signing an easement. And in the last, I guess it was about the last week, Ed, is that right? Ed has taken this under his wing and he's taking care of getting all of these completed. And we had the final one here. So we'll be moving forward with the sidewalk in spring. Thank you. If you haven't heard, I will let you know that the Tim Hortons grand opening is going to be Thursday, January 12th. So it went up pretty quick, didn't it? It's the old Long John Silver location. We've gotten the second part of our sidewalk study back just today. So the reports that we're getting are extremely detailed. The first half of it was in a binder about this thick and the second half is, I think, in the same thing. There's a huge box sitting on my desk. It's about, you know, this wide and, you know, huge. So it's a very intense study that they did of our sidewalks. So we'll be reviewing that in the next few weeks here and we'll be talking about it more at the committee meeting. So I would like to try to get some time at the committee, excuse me, the committee meeting to talk about the sidewalk study. We've also got the facility study as well. And that will be, that committee will be meeting to review that, the results of that study as well. We've had a draft review, or what do we want to call that? A draft study? And Mark has made a few comments on it and some of the things that we were expecting that they were going to report on that weren't necessarily included in the study in the first round here. So we should be getting that back shortly and that committee will be meeting to discuss that and review it. And then I think a lot of you had heard me mention in the December meeting, I talked about presenting kind of the road ahead or some of the things that, some of the goals for the next year here and that I would be discussing that tonight. We're actually going to be discussing that next month. I would like to have a chance to review that with council and committee, in the committee meeting. So we'll be talking about it at the next meeting, if I can get the time there. And I want to make sure we get input from council. I've talked with the leadership team and had some of the staff input. We're still getting some of that in as well, so looking forward to presenting that as well. And that's all I had to review this evening. So we'll move on then to the reports, or excuse me, the committee organization discussion. Randy, is this, are you leading this?
I can, I'd be fine. Basically, you know, we need to organize ourselves into committees and we've kind of informally talked among ourselves and put together a municipal order as to how committees should be organized or what we're anticipating they'd be organized. I don't believe there's any objections to it. Kind of talked to everybody. So basically, it's laid out in the municipal ordinance that we, municipal order that Frank has drafted here. We try to keep as much stability on the committees as we could and also parcel out to everybody. So we just have some organization. If there's any questions about why things were done or anything, certainly you'll have to answer them.
I figure everybody took their seat, so they must...
We're sitting here, so.
Yeah, they must not oppose it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And sorry for putting you on the spot.
That's all right, I can handle it.
All right, the next thing we have is the reports of committees on the agenda. First is public safety, police. Chief Wilson, is Chief Wilson going to speak about it or is our police committee? Okay, great, thank you.
I was told.
It'll be brief, but it was a very busy month, December was for us as far as holiday programs. Thank goodness it wasn't busy in the other aspect. Through a very generous donation from ADM, the parent company of Wild Flavors, we were able to participate in Cops with Kids, the former Shop with a Cop program, where we took 24 kids from Erlanger that probably weren't going to have that great of a Christmas. We got to take them shopping to a movie dinner and then we provided them with a Christmas dinner for their families. We also participated in the Cops and Kids program with Villa Hills in Erlanger because apparently the majority of kids that were in need from River Ridge were Erlanger residents. So we had two. And towards the end of, or towards the middle of December, we ended up with a third one for a bunch of preschoolers. I think it was 55 or so preschoolers that we were contacted by the Head Start program. So we got to spend a lot of the FOP's money, probably 20,000 or so. Very nice to give it though. So it worked out really good, impacted probably 100 kids or so that weren't going to get a, you know, a thing and probably some of them weren't going to eat that holiday meal. So that was really good. We got the entire department scheduled for training, in-service training for the year. We were able to do that luckily in about a week's time. It's a massive undertaking, but we've got some really good people and we got it done in about a week. Other than that, not a whole lot went on. There was a lot of downtime, so we made it through the year without anybody getting seriously hurt or injured. Nobody's off right now. We're still in a hiring phase, so you might see some new faces around the PD. If you don't know who they are, just ask. I don't know all of myself right now, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Didn't Wild Flavors give the city $15,000? Is that...
It's ADM, the parent company of Wild Flavors. They donated 15,000 to the FOP specifically for the Cops and Kids. And that's where we got most of the money.
I just wanted everybody to know that.
Now, there was other, there were several other businesses and we're going to get a list. We collected about 23,000 or, I don't, it's the FOP business, so I'm not fully involved in that. There's a lot of other very generous businesses in the city that gave a lot of money and they do every year and they have for the last 25 years, so.
We need to let the people know what businesses give that money.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Community partners.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
And we need to also herald the FOP 55. Those guys are incredible. I mean, they look under rocks to find kids that need us and it was, they do.
They're not hard to find.
Beautiful, beautiful.
And I'll tell you, one of the consistent businesses throughout the years is, not even in the city, it's Edgewood Cleaners. If anybody goes in there, they harass you until you give money. Literally, don't they? Yeah.
Or else, huh?
Any other questions?
Didn't we also get a $10,000 grant?
Forgot all about it. We sure did.
I saw it in the news.
Against some other advice we put in for the Roethlisberger, the Ben Roethlisberger grant, and we were a lucky recipient for $10,000 specifically for a new police canine. So we are in contact with the provider of those dogs now and we're going to start looking...
Beautiful.
We're very selective. The dog cost about 13.5 and then some other stuff, but we got, we've got the money in seizure funds, so it's going to, 90% of the money is going to come from that.
Fantastic.
And Ed Bailey's responsible for that. He does all the grant activity.
Yeah, he's a master at that. If you ever need money, go to Ed. Yeah.
Only if it's not his.
Oh yeah, exactly.
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next under public safety, we've got Fire EMS. Chief Whitaker? You didn't have to sign up, we were going to call you.
I have a 22-page report that you all received. No, I'm not going to go through it. Kudos to Chief Wilson for accepting the Ben Roethlisberger. I can tell you, our department would've declined. Kudos. We too, our department also received, in fact, we were both there the day that ADM generous enough to award us with a $15,000 grant. We are going to use that towards thermal imaging cameras. In fact, we brought one in to show them exactly what they were getting us. So it's a wonderful tool of the trade for us and it was a very generous of them to do so. So we're very grateful for that. December is kind of a downtime. I mean, most of the training, the inspections are out of the way for the most part. We don't have Shop with a Cop or we don't have those things in the fire department. The thing that, the thing, the charity, I guess, that we work with is the Steinfeld Toy Foundation out of Covington. Many people aren't aware of this organization. They've been around for a long time, over 90 years. And they set up basically just boxes at the fire stations and we collect toys and we give them out all over, whatever fire department, all the toys that were collected in Erlanger go to Erlanger families. All the toys collected in Covington go to Covington, so on and so forth. And we were able to give over 4,000 families this year. So it's a lot of toys. So that's kind of ours. I wish we had the procession that you guys could do. I really want to get in on that so bad. But that's kind of our charitable organization that we have. Really, I mean, I can quote numbers and I would like to, Jay Kelly's not here tonight. He would be getting his 10-year service pin award. He's not here. He's out of town. But I do want to say that congratulations to him. He won't show up next month either, so I'm going to have to say it now. Jay's been a member of the department obviously for 10 years. He came from Taylor Mill back then. I met Jay quite a few years ago and he is a firefighting machine. I think the hottest fire I ever fought was when I was in Fort Mitchell and we burned, we basically burned one to the ground right there on Dixie Highway. And I remember Jay was by my side and we were face down in the basement of that and it was so hot and Jay was right there by my side. He is a firefighting machine. He will be back in January. He was out with knee surgery. We're going to be glad to have him back and I just wanted to congratulate him on his 10 years. He's not here to accept it. We also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Jordan Otway. He's not here tonight, but he just recently completed Gateway Paramedic Class. He was named the Student of the Year and we are very proud of Jordan and we're going to do everything we can to keep him. We are very, very, we've got some great young people and we're going to try to keep them and I just wanted to mention him as well. Any questions? We would've accepted it from Aaron Rogers, but I am not going to accept it.
All right, thank you, Chief. Next, we've got Public Works. Mr. Millican?
Good evening. Mr. Bogart couldn't be here tonight. He had a family commitment, so I'm in his place. Brief rundown, I'm not going to be long. As you mentioned, Mayor, we had all the easements signed. Our next capital projects for the rest of this year will be the Erlanger Road reconstruction between Halbert Avenue and Baker Street, along with the Nelson Sidewalk Project that will run from Buckhill Drive to Ashmont. 2016 leaf collections wrapped up the 12th of last month with a total of 972 cubic yards of leaves collected, spending 834 man-hours. And the Christmas Tree drop-off program has started. It runs December 26th through January 16th and the drop-off is at the Public Works Facility at 3516 Jack Shave and Drive. And you can drop them off anywhere between 7:30 a.m. and 4 p.m. Monday through Friday. And last, we stole some of the fire department's thunder this Christmas. We were honored to deliver Santa Claus to the annual Christmas tree lighting and the holiday extravagance at the library. I think the kids really enjoyed the big snowplow. Any questions?
We had one, the Nelson Road sidewalk. Is it going to go down to the glades, you know?
Not at this time. I know we're working on another, because the other part of it's on the grant we're looking at that will finish off the rest of the sidewalk from like Brightleaf out Narrows Road. And then that will come up through there.
Okay.
Any else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we've got Administration. Mrs. Hoffman?
Well, the mayor introduced Lauren. Lauren's a senior at Lloyd High School and she's going to be interning with us for the rest of the school year after, and I think you're class president, aren't you? Okay. After the school year, she hopes to go to college and major in Public Administration and Political Science. So we are very lucky to have her and welcome her.
Absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to mention is Jen Magerly. She does our passport program for the city and every now and then the US Department of State goes around and they do an audit. And this year, we had our audit and we received a 100% and we also received a certificate of appreciation from them in the mail.
Wow. 100%? What a slacker!
Yes. Kathy started that program years ago and Jen took it over and she's just done a really wonderful job, so I want to give her a kudos there. And then the other thing is the state legislative session starts this week, so I really encourage everybody to go to www.klc.org, follow up on the bills that they're going to be presenting and contacting your local legislators. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, move on to Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Hahn, Mr. Bodie, okay?
I'll also be brief. The fiscal year 2016 audit report has been completed. We are requesting a finance committee meeting for January 17th to have the auditors come in formally present the audit report. Each council member and department head will receive a copy of the report and the complete audit report will also be posted to the city's website. The fiscal year 2018 budget worksheets have been distributed to each of the department's, department heads and the staff has begun preliminary work on revenue estimates for the coming year. Each council member will be sent a copy of the budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year 18 budget, once each departmental meeting has been set. Please be sure to mark your calendars for Saturday, March 4th, which is the tentative date for the annual budget retreat. You were also sent a copy of the November 30th, 2016 financial statements on December 30th. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right, sure.
So along that with this budget calendar, so now speaking with the mayor and we've talked about this from last year to this year, we would like the committees to be a part of those individual meetings. So I'm going to be sending you out those dates to see what times that you would be available and to do that. So I know some of you work and do other things like that. So if we give you some dates, if you would please just respond back to us about, you know, what is the best times for you and we'll try to schedule those around your schedule the best we can so you can attend.
Sounds good.
And it probably is a four-hour kind of thing, so it's not going to be a couple hours. So just plan on a four-hour block if we're lucky.
That's true.
Yeah. So thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it does take some time, but it is so worthwhile to see every part and piece of these budgets as it's getting put together. All right, Mr. Hahn, did you have anything? Yeah?
I just wanted to mention, the mayor brought up Tim Hortons. Next month is our business spotlight. We've got Hagadorns. They'll be our business spotlight. They were scheduled two or three times last year, as last year they celebrated their 75th anniversary in the city of Erlanger. Due to different times that they couldn't make, so they're going to be here next month. So that's, just wanted to mention that. There's a lot going on economic development-wise that we're working on, Mark and the mayor and I. So hopefully we'll be here and you'll be seeing some of that come forward here over the next couple of months, hopefully. So.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Pitts?
Yes. I just want to verify, is it January 12th that they're opening?
January 12th, yes.
Thursday at 2 o'clock?
Thursday at 2 p.m.
2 p.m.
It's 2 p.m.
There's a lot of inquiring minds that want to know.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people say, what the heck is it?
Oh, I've been bugged to death. I hear it's going in, when's it open and when's it... And when's it open? I'm like, I have to eat these doughnuts. I keep hearing about them.
If you're a coffee drinker, their coffee's supposed to be really, really...
Supposed to be...
If you're a coffee drinker, it's one of the, yeah.
They're the Starbucks of Canada.
That's a great way of putting it. Yeah. Because they do have lunch as well.
Yes. They got sandwiches.
Yeah, that's a good way of saying it.
Starbucks of Canada.
Sure. Sure. Okay. The amazing thing, the acoustics in this room, we can hear you great. Like, you're just speaking in a regular voice and I don't know why. I mean, is everybody else here? All right. We'll work on speaking up. Thank you, Dave. All right. Oh, are you? Okay. Yes, you are. Go ahead, yeah. Codes, Building and Zoning.
Yes. Nothing there. I sent out the, an email with the report for the Building and Zoning Report as well as the Codes Enforcement Report. So, you have that and I also put a copy of it. I apologize for email not being till today, but due to the way the days of the holidays were falling, it's just kind of the way it occurred. So, but I put a hard copy in front of each one of you today. So, unless you have any questions of that, that's about all I have.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lot happening right now. It's a wonderful thing. All right. Next, we've got Progress and Revitalization. Mr. Fields?
Now, this will be the last time that you see this committee on the agenda. We will no longer have this committee after tonight. It will all fall under the Codes Enforcement part with Mr. Burke and Mr. Nicely. Just wanted to let you all know, if you go on our website, the new Codes Enforcement law that went into effect, that we had to have in effect January one, the registry is now on there. All the citations will be on there that get issued from January one forward. Also, a spreadsheet that's going to have every address that's had a codes violation on it will be there. That was part of the law that said we had to do that and had to put it out there. So, if you go on our website, go over to the left-hand side, go under Codes and click on Codes and that's where you can find everything. So, all the other cities have done it. If you look at Florence, you can see theirs too, the way it is. So, it is a state law that went into effect January one. Just wanted to let everybody know that we are complying with that and everything is on there. We've set the new, there will be a Codes Enforcement Board meeting. David, what was that date? We looked this morning. The eighteenth, the swearing, the new Code Enforcement Board that was appointed and to give them some preliminary kind of instructions about going forward with the attorneys and getting them, showing what exactly their roles will be in the enforcement of the new law that went into effect January one. So, having said that, we can close out that one. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. All right. You've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Sudkamp, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Then we've got the reports of our representatives. Are there any reports from the representatives this evening? Mrs. Skidmore?
I have a report on Kenton County Alliance. Actually, I did not get to attend the meeting today, but I do have some of the notes. There's a brochure that gets sent out every so often. It's called What's Happening Kenton County? And Kenton County Alliance has filled two pages of that brochure with articles for this publication. This effort should reach seventy thousand residents in Kenton County.
Awesome.
The silhouette update, I don't know if you're familiar with that. Notre Dame has their banners displayed in their school and then Kenton County Alliance is working with Simon Kenton High School. And the students have just completed their essays about why they choose to remain drug-free. And then, they actually hang or post their silhouettes because they're very, they have to be really careful about actually showing the real person.
Oh, okay.
So, they do the silhouettes. And then, last year, Joseph Beth Bookstore down in Crestview actually let them display the silhouettes there too. The metamorphosis update, that's the Butterfly Project, is moving right along. They have eleven sites now that are participating in this project. And it takes from the beginning of a, I guess it's a moth until it actually metamorphoses into being a butterfly. And it helps the kids with their learning and self-esteem. And Lindeman Elementary School has passed a tobacco-free campus policy. Lindeman is the first school in the Erlanger-Elsmer School District to support a twenty-four-seven tobacco-free campus policy. And they're working on signage for their campus. So, I don't know if they've contacted Public Works yet or not. Sometimes they do. And then, their, Kenton County Alliance is applying for the Drug-Free Communities Constitution Grant. And also, Kenton County Alliance went to the Erlanger-Elsmer School Board Meeting and